Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 22, 2024, regular meeting of the Township of Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to the newspaper designated by the township for notices. This meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live and will be available on demand on YouTube. This meeting is a quasi-judicial proceeding, meaning that the board has powers and procedures resembling a court of law, and we are obligated to objectively determine facts and draw conclusions from them in order to provide the basis of an official action. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Fire exits are to my right, which is your left, and the back of the room where you entered. And first up is roll call.
Okay. Mayor Baskerville.
President.
President.
Chair Brodak.
I'm here.
Mr. Campbell.
Also here.
Mr. Graham.
Here.
I should say Vice Chair Graham.
Thank you.
Ms. Lockman, Councilor Lockman. Mr. Jacobson.
I am here.
And Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Okay.
Welcome to our, or welcome back to both of our new members here, Councilor Lockman, Mayor Baskerville. Thank you for joining us. Look forward to, I know. Yeah.
Aren't I looking back at you sitting in the same seat?
And I got my buddy next to me.
It's like not much has changed, really.
That was intentional.
Other than the chair, the vice chair, the mayor.
You know, just those few things. Couple other new members. Anyways, next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from June 24.
I received changes to the minutes from Mr. Graham, although I couldn't.
Very minor.
I couldn't tell from your edits.
Oh, yeah, it was just really typos.
Okay, okay.
Nothing substantive.
All right, good. Are there any other changes to the minutes?
I also looked at them because I couldn't help myself, right? And there was a couple of typos. I don't know if they're the same ones that Mike had.
I don't have my changes in front of me. I just had them, just emailed them over, so.
Yeah, I see there was a missing comma on page one.
I believe there was an extra one.
Maybe it's an extra comma, yeah. So there.
Do you want to just go off with what I have?
Sure.
And we'll be done with it, yeah. So the sentence at the bottom of the first page, it starts at 2869. It said, "Site plan of cannabis retail store."
Oh, yep.
Yep. And the sixth full paragraph on page two, it should, the first line should say, "Mr. Petry stated that the variances for impervious coverage and driveway with fall under," not falls.
Okay.
And page three, the fourth full paragraph should read, "A motion to approve the application with conditions was," so I'm sure these are the same things that Mike had.
That one, yes, because it said as instead of was. Yes, yeah, that's right.
Couldn't resist. I feel like it's my function on the planning board is to edit the minutes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Anyway.
And just, Janice, that additional comma, I believe, was after the, in the section "Approval of Minutes," a motion was made to approve the minutes of the June 10, 2024, comma, "Meeting, comma, as amended." I believe we were supposed to pull out the one after 2024.
Right, I see that.
And that was the only additional one.
Okay, got it. So is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
A motion to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstain.
Yep, I got the three abstentions.
Okay, next we have a resolution.
I received one correction, a very important one.
Do you have your mic on?
You need your mic, Art. Also a comma, Art.
From the Honorable Mr. Graham.
And this is just, just to be clear, this is a resolution for the Bellevue Theater?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And it's on page three, in the first full paragraph, four lines up from the bottom after the word "area," meaning walking into and from the parking area. I blew a comma.
I didn't want you to think I don't read these, and also, I thought you did a very nice job on this resolution.
Thank you. I do appreciate it when, no, really, I do, because my firm has a four-eyes kind of rule that one person writes and another person reads or reviews.
It was well done, the resolutions.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
I have to abstain, so I'm not going to second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstain.
Okay, we've got a lot of abstentions here. All right.
All right, we have no old business, so moving on to new business, we have application 2893 for 169 Cooper.
Can I ask about old business?
Sure.
Yeah, so in my view, there were a couple of old business things that we might want to get to next go-round.
Okay.
So I'm wondering how the master plan review is going?
Reexamination report.
Oh, sorry, reexamination, yeah.
Well, in terms.
Do you want to tackle that in committee?
Yeah.
Because I think that's master plan committee.
Okay, so, oh, put it under committee.
Yeah, let's tackle that in committee report.
Okay, all right. The next thing was the indemnification provision, which will, I'll try to bring before the council. And, well, I don't want to mention it, but Lackawanna Plaza.
Forget that. Anything going on with?
Anything going on with Lackawanna Plaza?
Nothing new. Nothing's been brought to my attention since recently, so.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Tremulak.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Mayor Baskerville, congratulations.
Good evening, thank you.
Welcome to the, to the planning board. Councilor Lockman, congratulations, welcome back to the planning board. For the record, Alan Tremulak appearing this evening on behalf of Union Congregational Church. This is a fairly straightforward minor subdivision application involving property located at 169 Cooper Avenue, which is on the north side of the street, more or less directly opposite the church building on the south side of Cooper Avenue. Property is in the R1 Zone District, contains a single-family house, which has historically been used as a parsonage or residence for one of the clergy members at the church. This is a fairly large lot consisting of over 33,000 square feet of lot area with 158 feet of lot width. Given the width of the lot, we are able to comply with the minimum lot width requirement in this area, which is 75 feet, and we actually comply with all of the zoning criteria applicable to this property, and that's been confirmed by the township planner in her memorandum to the board. So it's a fully compliant, fully conforming subdivision application with no variances being required. Plan has also been reviewed by the HPC, which determined that the approval of the subdivision would have no impact whatsoever, would not change the historic character of the neighborhood. So the application pretty much speaks for itself, the plans speak for themselves, although I do tend to provide some brief testimony from Tim Christ, who's sitting to my right, who's the moderator or chairperson, if you will, of the Board of Trustees for the church. I should also point out that also in the audience are my friend Paul Sionis, who's usually sitting up here. Paul is a longtime member of the Board of Trustees at the church and happy that he's here and not testifying, although he is available in the event any questions might arise. And also with Paul is John Thompson, the executive director of the church, who's also here in the event there should be a question that he might be able to answer. So having said that, I'd ask that Mr. Christ be sworn in.
Before we do that, Janice, do you have exhibits?
Yes, A1 is the application, A2 is the certification of taxes paid, A3 is the proof of publication, A4 is the affidavit of service, A5 is the subdivision plat prepared by Richard Hingos dated July 18, 2023, A6 is the report from the Historic Preservation Commission dated June 27, 2024, and A7 is the report from the Planning Department dated June 26, 2024.
Janice, you also want to mark the revised subdivision plan? I gave to Janice just before the meeting, a revised plan that Mr. Hingos prepared that simply adds the zoning requirement for building coverage, which Janice had referenced in her planning memorandum, and that had been omitted from the zoning chart, but it's now been added to the zoning chart and confirms that we are below the maximum for building coverage.
Okay, I didn't, okay, yes, we'll mark that as A8.
It has a revision date of today, actually.
Right.
Do you have extra copies of that, Mr. Tremulak?
This is one, this is an extra copy.
I gave Janice three. I can provide more if necessary.
It's fine.
That's two copies there. Does anybody from the board want a copy?
It's, this plan is the same, it just adds the requirement for building coverage.
So it's right at the bottom of the zoning chart, max building coverage, the requirement's 25%, and what's proposed for lot 13.01 is 14.6%?
Correct.
And not applicable for proposed lot 13.02?
Well, the requirement's the same, but there's no, there's no structure on that lot.
Right, right, it's still the same requirement, just nothing's being proposed for that lot.
Yes.
Okay.
Sir, you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Is the red, is the light on there?
It's on.
If you could move the microphone closer to you?
I do.
Thank you. And would you please state your full name and affiliation with the applicant, please?
Timothy J. Christ, I'm moderator of the Governing Board of Union Congregational Church.
How do you spell your last name?
C-R-I-S-T. Please do not put an H in it.
Tim, how long have you been a member of Union Congregational Church?
About 30 years.
Okay. And you indicated that you're currently the moderator of the Board of Trustees. Is the moderator effectively the chair or?
Yes, it's equivalent to president or chair of our trustee board, which we call the governing board.
Okay. And how long have you been the moderator?
For the past year. I'm now starting my second year of a two-year term.
Okay. All right, and Union Congregational Church is the owner of the property located at 169 Cooper Avenue, is that correct?
That's right, yes.
And am I correct that the property is on the north side of the street, more or less directly opposite the church building?
Yes, it is.
Okay. How long has the Union Congregational owned this property at 169 Cooper?
About 75 years.
Okay. And building, and the property contains a single-family house, correct?
That's right.
Okay. And who currently resides in the house?
Our senior minister, our lead minister, lives in that house.
Okay, and to your knowledge, has the house always been utilized as a residence for a minister or clergy member of the church?
At that location, yes. It was, before the church moved it across the street, it was on the south side and was for a period of time a clergy residence, but when it was built in 1899 by the Van Dyke family, it was a single-family residence.
Okay. It's continued to be a single-family residence?
Throughout, yes.
Yes, okay. The church has filed this application seeking to subdivide the property and create a new lot on the western half, if you will, of the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
If the application is approved and the property is in fact subdivided, what does the church plan to do with the newly subdivided lot?
We are evaluating alternatives but have not made any decisions about the disposition of that lot. We recognize that it is, would remain in an R1 single-family home zone.
Okay. So for now, you're going to, the church intends just to retain ownership of the lot.
That's right.
But in the future?
In the future, it is possible that the governing board may recommend to the congregation to sell or build a house on that lot.
Okay, but that would have to be determined in the future?
Yes.
Approved by the congregation?
Yes.
Okay. And meanwhile, so we're just seeking to subdivide the property. Are there any changes that would result from the subdivision with respect to the existing house and the garage on the property?
Not immediately. If the lot were sold and a new single-family home were built on the vacant portion, the new subdivided lot, then it is likely that the driveway would be, there would be a new driveway on, next to, on the west side of the existing house.
Okay. And the driveway that's currently there that provides access to the house would be relocated onto what's referred to as proposed lot 13.01?
That's correct.
Okay. That's really all I have for Mr. Christ, just some basic background information. Board has any questions?
This is just to educate me, it probably has nothing to do much with the application, but, so you subdivide this lot and you build a house on it and you continue to own that house. Is that also not subject to property tax because it's owned by the church?
I do not know the answer to that. It is unlikely that the church itself would build a new house on that property.
It's just unlikely, yeah. If you subdivide the lot, is the vacant land taxed even though it's owned by a, you know, a church? I'm just kind of curious more than anything.
I think I can answer that legally.
Yeah.
I believe I know the answer to that. I mean, there's an exemption in the state statutes for parsonage. Each church property is allowed to have a separate lot as a parsonage that is exempt from taxes, and I believe you can have no more than one parsonage, so.
I believe it's two. We have two parsonages. We have one on the east side of our, of our church, and we have this one across the street.
So maybe that could be taxed?
Well, if a third house goes there, I think, even if the church retained ownership and even if they utilized it as a third parsonage, it would probably be subject to real estate taxes.
Property taxes.
But it wouldn't until, I think it would remain taxed unless and until a new house is built on the property.
So if you subdivide it, is the empty lot tax exempt?
I believe it would not be subject to tax until something is done with that lot.
Yeah.
Because the creation of the subdivision would not result in that becoming a taxable lot, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Would there be sufficient room for the new driveway, or would there be a variance needed?
My understanding is a variance would not be needed. When the house was placed on the lot, on the eastern side, eastern end of the lot in the late 1950s, the intent at that time was that it would be placed, situated in such a way that the lot could be subdivided at a future point. 169 Cooper was the residence of Charles G. Phillips and his family. It was built around the turn of the century. You may know that Mayor, Mr. Phillips was mayor of Montclair around the time of the Depression. After his death and then the subsequent death of his wife, his family gave the property and house on it to the church. That house was subsequently razed, and the house that is currently on that property was moved from across the street so that the church could build its education building next to the, to the main church building.
Yeah, very interesting history, and I know we did review some of that for the HPC, and I guess, you know, my only, my only, I mean, I just wanted to just clarify, given that there's a 16 and 2/3 foot distance between the porch, you know, we wouldn't want anything to damage the home or, and the proposed property line, does anyone know if that is sufficient room for a driveway?
I think we only need 10 feet for a driveway.
Really need 10 or 12?
You only need 10 feet and it needs to be one foot off the property line, so.
One foot, so then that would be, yes, sufficient room.
We looked at that, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, but it is a very interesting history to the home.
So is the intent most likely then to sell the subdivided property if the church?
That remains a possibility. No decision has been made.
Okay, this is kind of the first step?
Yes.
I see. And do you know what size house would fit on the other lot, on the subdivided lot?
I mean, I mean, we'd have to meet, you know, I think it would, you know, obviously a house would have to fit within the building envelope. It could be a fairly significant-sized house if, but it would have to comply with zoning criteria, so another house has been designed, I mean, if you want, Mr. Sionis could come up and talk about, but again, he.
He's shaking his head as you say that.
I'd like him to have the night off and just sit out there.
Without a PowerPoint, without a PowerPoint, he can't do it.
He could probably design a house while, you know, before the meeting's over, if you'd like, but.
What an advocate.
But again, whatever house is built there, if a house is built there, would have to meet the zoning requirements in place at the time, the building permit is applied for in terms of setbacks, height, et cetera.
Would HPC have an opportunity to review?
I don't, I don't believe so unless the property was formally designated or.
Well, no, if there's any variances, then it has to go to the Board of Adjustment, and by law, it gets referred to the HPC, but it's not a designated historic district and it's not a designated historic site, so when building the house, if there's, if it's a variance-free house, it does not get referred to the HPC.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Just one more question. What is the lot currently used for?
It is currently vacant.
You don't use it for anything at all?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? No? Mr. Tremulak?
With an actual straightforward application.
Oh, actually, first, any, any questions from the audience for this witness?
So, I have a question about.
Well, if you could step up to the lectern here?
So.
No, no, we need you on the record, so if you can step up to the lectern and just let us know.
I love the church, but would this lot be?
Can we just, can we just make sure the light is on too?
You need to turn on the microphone.
I'm Mary Ann Brinley of the next door, 167 Cooper Avenue.
Wait, what's your name again?
Mary Ann Brinley, 167 Cooper Avenue. So in answer to, I was going to pursue your questioning, would this lot then be, is this a church property that's going to be sold with no taxes, or?
Well, if, if the church were to sell it?
Yes, that's right.
And it was, it was sold to a private entity, that entity, whether an individual or whatever, would be taxable.
Would be taxable? Oh, that's, that was my question. Sure. I thought you were like, would this be a taxable property? Because it's a great street, we love giving our taxes to Montclair, so, anyway, and then, so seriously, and what is the, what is the probability of this being sold? It's a tight lot. That driveway is going to be right next to the front porch.
Yeah.
It's going to be really tight. And there's a garden there now, and people have parties there, so we'd love to have it developed, but what do you think? What is the, what is the probability of this happening?
Well, I would certainly say the probability is much greater if the lot is subdivided than if it's not subdivided.
I know that, I know that. And the church needs money to invest in the church.
And I, and I must say, I'm almost a neighbor of yours, since I'm just down the street on Cooper Avenue across Park Street.
Good, good.
Although on the Cooper family property, not on, the north side of the street was not owned by the Cooper family, the south side was, and the Cooper family did give the property for the church and the, the main parsonage. It is, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
But it, because there are a number of things that would need to fall into place, but it is one that if the decision is made, we would certainly take into account the, the feelings of our neighbors and would wish to remain good neighbors with all in the, in the neighborhood, so.
Yeah.
But I can't, because no proposal has been made, no decision about a proposal has been made, no, nothing has been taken to the congregation, I can't really go much beyond that.
Exactly, yeah. We just were, I was just, we're here because we were like curious about what was going on, and we love the church, we love the neighborhood. One of our neighbors was really worried about a parking lot because we had a big issue many, many years ago. So you're not going to make it a parking lot. Great, okay, thanks a lot.
There's no parking lot.
I assume you have no other witnesses?
No, the only thing I would, I would just add, Mr. Chairman, there were two comments in Ms. Tally's report, one we have already addressed by submitting the revised subdivision map with the building coverage noted. The second comment was that if a house is developed, a development fee would be due to the town at that time. We obviously, that is in fact the case, and we would accept that, not that we have any choice, as a condition, so.
Ms., did you have another question for the witness? It's also the time, if you'd like to make a comment, positive or negative about the application, you can come up to the lectern.
I think we know where she stands.
I have to offer, on the record, I have to offer. Any discussions with the board? No? This is, it's like, this is, this is straightforward, there's no variances required, you've accepted the development fee, committed to not building a parking lot on the, on the lot, and so with those conditions and our standard conditions, I would move to approve this.
Second? Who said, Mayor Baskerville, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have committee reports. We'll talk committee appointments and then also a couple of these other items. Councilor Lockman.
Oh, I just realized I don't have my list of committee openings. Mayor Baskerville, I think I put it in front of you, so, and you should all have got it in your packets, yes. What I tried to do was highlight, since we have so many new members on the.
Is that one highlighted?
Yeah, you can keep it. Michael, Michael gave me his.
I swiped it.
And Janice, you were missing, you didn't highlight Roger Terry.
Correct, I saw that.
Oh, yes, yes.
Under the Personnel Committee.
Right, I'm sorry, I missed that one. So because there's been such change, we decided to wait until the new members were, were decided on the planning board before we updated the planning board committees. Now, I see here on the Nominating Committee, that's usually, that's already set in our bylaws, so now that I know who the Class Two and the Class Three members are, the Class Two is Kevin, no, the Class Two is Carmel, and Kevin, you're the Class Three. I can keep that as it is. But there are two positions open on the Personnel Committee, one on the Revisions Committee, one on the Redevelopment Subcommittee, and one on the Zoning Subcommittee. The Zoning Subcommittee works with us on making changes to the zoning ordinance. The Redevelopment Subcommittee does the first review of redevelopment plans, either those that are initiated by the planning board or those that are initiated by the council. that are initiated by the Planning Board or those that are initiated by the council. It really is a means by which certain members do a deep dive on issues and then report back to the Planning Board, and we always try to set aside meetings because we are the Planning Board. It's not just reviewing applications, it's doing planning. So this is really the way we function. And if there's anybody who wants to give up a position, we have on the Master Plan Subcommittee or one of the others, I think this is a good time since we have so many new members to start the discussion.
I do have a question, and please, no offense at all. You have the Redevelopment Committee, and yet the two people that are on it have really not worked on redevelopment plan before? Don't we think there should be someone on there who's done this before? In addition, you know?
This is the third slide.
What?
This is the third slide.
Yeah, I mean, I think Chair Nguyen was the third member.
Yes, yeah.
So he brought the experience there.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so I'm just encouraging that we have someone who's had gone through this before.
Are you volunteering?
We have so many things to do. So, I mean, am I volunteering?
God.
Looking forward to working together.
Okay, so Carmel, we'll put your name for the Redevelopment Subcommittee.
I really don't want to do that, but.
Too late.
Never volunteer.
I only thought you were smarter than us.
I know.
We were looking for someone experienced.
And actually, with the Personnel Committee, we usually try to have a council member part of that, so.
But that's a fairly inactive.
That's why Roger, we had Roger Terry's name on there because it has to do with obviously contracts. So I don't know if you or Mayor Baskerville would want to take Roger Terry's position for the Personnel Committee.
What's the goal of the Personnel Committee?
Personnel Committee, every year, we evaluate our contracts.
Okay.
Our, the board, it's the board consultants and board professionals.
Kind of. We decide whether we want to issue an RFP.
Right. Now, just for, so everybody knows, for this year, we changed the process this year, so the contracts can be extended up to five years without having to go out for an RFP again.
One-year terms, Janice, if I recall? It's not like a three-year and then one-one, right? It's one-year terms?
Yeah.
That's right.
Right, if we want to keep them, we can keep them for a year. Up to five years is how it was, so we, before, we were doing RFPs every year and it really was inefficient.
Got it.
Especially if you want to keep your consultants, so.
Sure.
That sounds like a job for a lawyer.
We'll wait till January for that, don't worry.
So that's really the function of the Personnel Committee, and that's part of why we always try to have a council member on it, so when sometimes certain contracts have to go to the council as well for approval.
Is there anyone there? Makes sense.
But, yes.
Janice, I don't mind, I'll do that.
So I think we have, and I'll put you in for Roger Terry's name. If there's a third person who wants, Thamar?
Looks like everyone else has more than one committee, so.
These, most of these committees aren't very busy. It's really not a huge.
Correct. Bylaws hasn't met in a long time.
Yeah, and the Master Plan Subcommittee is probably going to.
The Master Plan Subcommittee is going to be very busy.
Going to pick up.
Yeah.
It's already full.
It's already full, unless, unless, I mean.
So we have an opening for the Revisions Committee. Revisions Committee is important because quite often, especially with the bigger plans, they come in, the plans change from the time they're approved to the time they're ready to submit their construction drawings. That's when we bring the plans back to the Revisions Committee for review and they determine, you know, if it's acceptable, if changes need to be made, or if it has to come back to the board as an amended site plan, so.
I have a feeling Jacob may want to do that, so we might want to ask him. I don't want to volunteer, but I think we can hold it and ask him because I, he expressed some interest in that the last time around, as I recall. And it's not, it's not far from his wheelhouse, so, two wheels, not four.
And well, before we, there's also the Zoning Subcommittee, which is also, and Jacob's already on that one. So that's also a very busy Subcommittee. There's always zoning changes, you know, adjustments, big and or little. So, right now, we've got Carol and Jacob on the Zoning Subcommittee, and I would strongly encourage anybody who's got some knowledge to consider being a member of that Subcommittee. It's pretty important.
We have some updates, so can we hold until, can we have everyone back?
Sure.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll leave that one open. And I'll update the list and send it out in the next packet. And speaking of meetings, all right, let me just, that's what I wanted to talk to you tonight about.
Do we have assigned leads for each of these committees?
Assigned what?
Leads.
Leads?
Yes.
There's no.
No. Ms. Tally generally coordinates the meetings and then it's, so that's, she kind of functions a bit as a lead.
I generally coordinate the meetings, like the Redevelopment Committee met on their own, issued their own report, because I had my, and I thought that was perfectly fine, so it's not too structured.
Right.
Depends upon the issue.
I find each of the boards around town operate a little differently, so thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. And if we, before we move to meetings, can we just stay on and finish out committee reports?
Go ahead.
Council Lockman, you had asked about what's the latest on what the Master Plan reexamination report?
Well, that's what I was going to talk about.
Oh, that goes right into meetings, okay. Then, go for it.
So that's a good segue. We have a pretty light agenda. That's where I was, so I think there's, and I have a full, I'm fully staffed. So we have time, you know, I've had my assistant planners and ab working on updating the data tables from the Master Plan Reexamination Report. I am preparing a report to the council on our, on the requirements for the housing element and fair share plan, which I mentioned to the Planning Board. The deadline for it to be filed, and it's a mandatory filing, is June 30th of 2025, which means we have to start working now.
Sure.
Right, and I'm preparing a report. The council has asked that I submit, that I make a presentation to them at their council meeting next week. I'm preparing the report, we'll make that presentation. I'd like to follow up because I think that that's the critical thing before we start doing the Master Plan because we are under a time, a narrower timeframe to finish the housing element and fair share plan.
By one year, right?
Yes.
Because we have to do our Master Reexamination Report, Master Plan Reexamination Report by sometime in 2026.
2026.
Okay.
Okay. So I want to allocate the August, let me get my dates here, the August 19th Planning Board meeting to that and cancel the August 5th Planning Board meeting. We have a major application that was filed for Lloyd Road subdivision, an eight-lot subdivision on Lloyd Road.
Wow.
It's been deemed incomplete. I don't, I think they're going to have to make some significant changes before we can bring it to the Planning Board and the HPC.
Janice, who's the applicant?
It's an LLC. It's.
Do we, because I ask because I may have to, I may very likely have to recuse from that one depending on who it is.
Well, okay, well, if you look on the, on the website, the application's there, I think it's 152.
Art told me the answer, so I'm out.
Okay, so you know who's behind it, okay. I just know the LLC is, for now.
I couldn't pronounce his name if I had to.
Okay.
I can, but.
But that's why you have to recuse yourself.
Honestly, the earliest that that could be heard would be possibly September, most likely October, because they have to go to the HPC first. So we have time, because there's nothing else on, in terms of pending applications. So I'd like to dedicate the August 19th meeting to talk about the housing plan. If we have time, we could talk about the Master Plan, but dedicate that meeting to that discussion. I also, I am not going to be here for September 9th, I'll be out of state, so I don't, I don't, I'll leave that to you if you want to meet separately, but I can't be here. We can just cancel it, and then our next meeting in September would be September 23rd.
I mean, if we don't have much on the agenda for the September 9th, then we can cancel it as we get a little bit closer.
Yeah, let's see what happens on August 19th.
Yeah.
Okay, but that way it'll give us time to button everything up in terms of a presentation, you know, and I'll bring my staff, at least my assistant planner, to that meeting, perhaps our new economic development coordinator. If we go into the Master Plan, he would be part of that discussion as well. He's a planner, too.
Are we canceling August 5th?
August 5th.
Is canceled.
Is officially.
Yes.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to speak about.
Gotcha. And it ties in with committee reports, so.
Yes, it ties in.
I just want to make clear that we owe Mr. Campbell an 11:30 meeting and, you know, I keep telling them it happens and it keeps not happening, and, you know, one of these days it's going to, you know, it's going to happen, so I don't, you know, I don't.
Bar is too late. You get spoiled pretty early.
I'm okay with it not being 11:30.
Yeah.
Why did you call me and tell me that you wanted that? I thought you were going to keep that between us.
And then as everyone heard, Ms. Lockman, or sorry, Councilor Lockman is going to pick up the Defense and Indemnification Ordinance again and hopefully, yeah, hopefully moves that through. I wonder, Mr. Campbell, if you were around when we talked about that?
I don't think so. Doesn't ring a bell.
No, the gist is that the council, the last council adopted an ordinance that makes clear that they are indemnified for, against lawsuits pertaining to their official actions. The language is, depending on how one looks at it, either ambiguous in whether it covers appointed board members or whether it clearly doesn't. We suggested to the last council that they pick it up particularly because the Planning Board and individual members of the Planning Board have been sued in the past, so we want there to be no ambiguity at all. It's not a significant, it's not, it doesn't require a lot of heavy lifting to fix it, it's an easy language change, and if it's the council's policy to indemnify board members, it would be a very good change to make and one that all of us would greatly appreciate.
Agreed.
And perhaps other boards.
The language, the language we proposed would pick up, would pick up the other boards. I mean, it's, you know, we tend, we've been the frequent flyers, but there's no reason not to extend it to, to the other boards as well. We proposed the language fix and it's, Ms. Lockman was a, was a, Councilor Lockman was a strong advocate of it while she was sitting here in a non-council capacity, and it would be wonderful if it could move because it's something that, you know, we should not be dependent on our homeowner's insurance.
If we have it.
If we have it. If that covers it.
It's not covered under every homeowner's policy, so it's not covered under my homeowner's policy, so, yeah.
Yeah, especially with some of the larger applications that are coming up that most likely will involve some lawsuits afterwards.
Yeah, and our litigious Monclarians, too. Right?
Those are your constituents now, Councilor, easy.
That's true.
Anything else on committee reports? Questions? No? Bills?
Is there a motion to pay the bills? There were no questions.
I don't, I didn't get a hard copy packet, so.
You didn't get a packet?
No.
Were you, you're supposed to get a packet, right?
No, not normally.
Okay.
I think you had mentioned that the bills were only available in hard copy, so I never got a.
I thought I attached them to the email, but, okay. My intention was to attach them to the email.
Don't look too deep, okay?
Well, I always look deep.